I call the Willoughby City Council Meeting of February 12, 2018. Sandy, who's in?
Biondelo.
Here.
Boggo.
Present.
Jaworski.
Here.
Koski.
Here.
Levon.
Here.
Sackus.
Here.
Saloto.
Here.
Approval of council minutes of January 22, 2018.
Make motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Sackus, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto, to through the council minutes of January 22, 2018. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelo.
Yes.
Boggo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
Reports of communications from the mayor, safety director.
Good afternoon, everybody. Lots of meetings the past couple of weeks. Met with First Energy contact, Dominion contact, getting a lot of the preliminary meet and greets. You know, not to say out of the way of course or important, but to get those handled in line. So, quick update for council for First Energy and Dominion, whenever there's outages or complaints, you know, take those, bring those to me first, and I can communicate with those people as I've got one contact for that. First Energy does have a nice app you can download, tell everyone to download it. They can report outages right on there, they cut down on phone calls, make things a little more precise, the more outages they report, quicker they'll get to the problem as well. Instead of calling everyone, make sure they report it online. Talked to the mayor of Willoughby last week, and talked about a couple of things. Pete and I have emailed you just some information just before the meeting about parcel number. It's on 305, we had some super issues with, so as we were talking about that, we were talking about the stormwater management system, which we're not in right now, is that correct? Because most other cities are, it works like some insurance program, we pay into it, but then when it's larger projects, they, it's sort of like the county does with road projects, you know, what I pay into it, but again, if we're doing bigger projects, they can help us out with that, somewhat like a grant money cost sharing. So, I suggest we get that into a committee to look at the stormwater management system, to see about joining that, to see, just again, how it works and how that could help us out in bigger projects going forward. Talked with some folks from the county, I know one of the economic development options we were looking at was either going within our own firm, or, you know, the county, Willoughby, Eastlake, and Kirtland are looking at, and they're going to come in if we can get a meeting on the 26th at 6:30, make a presentation about a joint economic development person, someone employed through the county, about the cost to be split through the communities so we'd have someone, you know, maybe one and a half days a week. A little bit different than what, you know, Maria and I had talked about, where that's more of a sort of bigger project, 12 months, 18 months, bigger project, bigger development. This is more of a day-to-day, you have businesses moving from one end of the county, trying to keep them in the county, or a business moving from Kiawaga County, keeping the relationships with the property owners, the business owners, helping with grants more day-to-day. So, it's not quite comparing apples to apples, but something interesting to look at, being that it's new. Now, other cities are going to probably move forward regardless of we do, but definitely should be entertained, so I'd like to ask if someone will call a committee meeting on the 26th at 6:30, or if we can do it at 6:00, I can see if the other gentleman, Ed Fitzgerald, can come in as well, so we can have both presentations on the same day if possible, if not, I'll get some other dates from him. Sent out letters to some of the property owners on Euclid Avenue, starting on Warden Road, or starting on Euclid Avenue heading West End, going to Warden Road. Got a couple of phone calls, had a couple of meetings, just meeting with as many business owners and property owners as I can, just to get feedback, so let them know that, just hey, I'm here to work with you, and see what we can do in that regard. Charter Review Commission had the first meeting, they're planning on four months to get it on this year's ballot, but of course, it may take longer, technically they have until June of 2019. One quick thing, when talking with folks from Dominion, I found out that they offer grants as well, not just for energy efficiency, for just community development, so Patty Fowler working on that, it's on a quarterly basis, we can apply every three months for different levels of grants. And one thing, you know, talking with some of their mayors, they have, they just call it a work session before every council meeting, I'm not sure for how long, maybe 45 minutes or an hour, so I believe that may be used in addition to or in place of committee meetings on different days, but we may want to consider doing that, just as we're already meeting here twice a month, we might want to plan on meeting 30 minutes, 45 minutes earlier. As especially early on, in our four-year term, we're looking at a lot of things, exploring a lot of things, just to have a consistent path of we're meeting every two weeks to work on whatever's in these committees. We can set the two weeks before what exactly we're going to discuss, obviously on that agenda, but we've got things, we've always got things in committee, we should always have some kind of work session going, so I'd suggest we consider doing that, the same day as council meetings, even if it's half an hour, it's twice a month, we're getting the time in, we're already here, right?
Right.
So, I'm a chew on there. And yeah, that's, yeah, that's all I've got.
Any questions for the mayor, safety director? Okay, we'll put stormwater management into the Energy Efficiency Environmental Committee, and we'll put the Port Authority presentation into the Economic Development Euclid Avenue Redevelopment Committee.
Mr. Council President, I'd like to call a, or schedule a meeting then for the Economic Development Committee on February 26th at 6:15 p.m.
Okay, reports and communications from the Director of Law.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, I don't have any report this evening.
Any questions or comments for the Law Director? Thank you, Scott. Communications from Council President, a couple of things for council, we should have received a financial disclosure statement, reminder, all people that ran for elections need to fill this out, and every year we fill this out annually, $35 or $45 charge for this, we do it every single year that we have to do, so it's a reminder that has to be done by the middle of April, I believe, or you start getting fined for that, so please make sure you fill that out, please that. I also received a notice for newly elected council training programs that they have, we may have gotten emails on this, not 100% sure, but there are trainings at the end of February, early March, if you're interested in this, come see me, I have it for you guys. Any other council members, any communications they would share? Additions or amendments to the agenda? I'd like to add to new business E, Lake County Permissive Tax, and letter F, Tobacco 21. Does any other council person have any, or mayor?
I have, Y of one, one other person I spoke to for the Charter Review Commission, so it's just amending A, appointment of Cameron Mays and Mike Casadante to the Charter Review Commission.
You'll add that to the, to letter A, add Mike Casadante to the letter A. Councilman Sackus.
Yes, I would like to add under letter G, charging for pavilion rental.
Charging for pavilion rental to letter G. Does any other council person have a addition or amendment to the agenda? Seeing none, move to the administrators. Police Chief Vice.
Thank you, Mr. President, in addition to my monthly report, I have a couple of things I'd like to report on. Our city council remembers that Ohio Savings Bank was dropped in August 2017, and they, these two guys also pretended they're out of Dollar General, Euclid Avenue, and they were responsible for two and three other bankruptcies in Cutler County. Both of them were sentenced last week, Richard Glenn received 25 years in federal prison, and Brandon Williams received 27 years in federal prison. Special note, there are detectives who are the catalyst for these other arrests, the two banks in Cutler County. We had another drug overdose death on Rosewell, that's the fourth one so far this year, who's been beat from accounting, and four of those have been unfortunately in Willoughby. On January 23rd, a house on Norman was burglarized at 3:00 a.m. What's unusual about this is that the homeowner was home, sleeping in a recliner, as this person broke into the house, it's kind of made off, it's very unusual, most burglaries occur during the daytime, they want people not to be there, so it's very unusual. There's very few investigative leads, but our detectives are working on it. And then, if you guys looked at our Facebook page, or saw the news, you saw the attempted aggravated robbery in Towne, where a gentleman pointed a gun at 66-year-old female trying to take her car. We were able to identify him, one of the neighbors has a home camera system, or a video system, security system at their house, and he voluntarily called us and gave us information, we were able to see a car that pulled into the driveway and backed out, and then Detective Thompson, who's kind of our IT guy, was able to enhance that to a certain level, and then we ran the police and we found out, car came back to somebody at Willoughby, which eventually led to the arrest of, the fellow's name is Blake Cook, he's living with his girlfriend on Grand Boulevard, but he actually lives in the city of Willoughby. He's also a suspect of two shootings in Cleveland, and the car also in Cleveland. The getaway car was driven by Danee Johnson, a 15-year-old kid, but our detectives are still working on that, unless you're charged, we're going to have. We found a gun at the house on Grand Boulevard, but their girlfriend and nephew and their brother were very helpful, they gave us consent to search, and the gun then used to rob the homes we had in our possession. So far this year, high-speed pursuits, we've had eight high-speed pursuits, which is very unusual, 15 years ago, we had five for the year, last year we had 30, so I think I'm going to bring that in a little bit, I'll put some additional parameters on it, that's going to restrict some chasing for property crimes. Our detectives are also working on three sex rape cases right now. And lastly, there's something in Ohio called the Ohio Collaborative Certification Process. This was born out of, out of the Black Lives Matter movement that was going on, the state of Ohio decided to come up with a certification process for certifying certain policies, and we just got certified for our second year of that, which is kind of a lengthy process, kind of a ping and you have to go through, or work and process of that. And that's all that I would say.
Any questions or comments for the Police Chief? Thank you, Chief Vice. Fire Chief Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, in addition to my monthly report, I did the first thing, the detectives, they helped us go through backgrounds and CBSA testing, for saving us substantial money for our new candidates. We'll be swearing in three new candidates next council meeting, 7:00 p.m. We've been working on grants, we recently received a small EMS grant, and then we just submitted a $60,000 grant submission to FEMA for some equipment for next year. And then, through the county prosecutor's office, we've received a settlement for a hazmat call that we were on in 2014, and we're seeing cons, as you're aware, the, the fire department has one of the two hazmat vehicles in the county, and when there's money to be regained, the county prosecutor goes after it for us. So, it wasn't much, like I said, it was a settlement, but still, it's nice that we got reimbursed for it. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Any questions, Councilwoman Sackus?
So, Chief Vice said that we've had our fourth overdose death, do you have, keep any kind of statistics on how many overdose calls you've been paid?
Actually, we've only had four this year, and all four have been deaths, so we haven't had any saves, we haven't, we've been kept, and there's an opiate task force in the county, and we were submitting that for the last six months, last year, to them on our monthly tallies, that's stopped, they got what they needed, the information they needed, but we haven't had opiate overdoses, other than the four the chief spoke.
Any further questions or comments for the Fire Chief? Thank you, Chief Powers. Finance Director Dolez.
In addition to my monthly report, I wanted to let you know that if you weren't here, I handed out draft budgets for a finance committee meeting, if you guys have any questions about this this week, I'm in the office most of the week, I have a training seminar on Friday, but I'll be in there, so please give me a call if you have any questions. And that's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Finance Director? Thank you, Ms. Dolez. Engineer Farmica.
Thank you, Council President, one thing to add to my written report, end of last week, Joe received a phone call from the Ohio EPA that there was a complaint for a illicit discharge of someone dumping either gasoline, oil, or antifreeze on their property. Joe and I met with Dan Bogavsky from the Ohio EPA, and another representative from their office, everything was covered with snow, we couldn't see anything, but we had a good discussion with EPA, everything's fine, we're going to check into it once the snow melts a little bit, but there's, there were no cars in the parking in the area, so it was kind of an unusual call, we think it might have been from a disgruntled employee, but just to let you know that we're on top of it.
Any questions or comments for the engineer? Councilwoman Koski?
You know, we tend to get a lot of calls about the Euclid Avenue project, it seems to be growing taller, I was wondering if there's any kind of height restraint, or...
Not necessarily, once the final grade is there, I mean, there's a site grading plan, and once that's, once the project is complete, that'll all be brought down to final grade. I'm sure, I'm guessing that he's storing some material for future use in other spots that he can't fill right now, so, or maybe couldn't compact at the time, so I have no concerns on that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the engineer? Thank you, Mr. Farmica. Service Director Dan Brozio.
Thank you, Mr. President, over the last couple of weeks, my biggest concentration's been on snow removal, so we're kind of looking forward to this week. We have been having a little problem with Cargill, they're our salt supplier, they're typically supposed to have salt to us three to five days, they're probably running two weeks behind. They're getting it to us, we still have, we got about 900 ton on order, we order every 300, so just to try to get on their list, we're supposed to get about 300 of it this week, I call them probably every other day, but all cities are going through this, I actually talk to different service directors, and I even told them to call them every day, that's kind of what I'm doing, so, they are keeping up with it the best they can, they do get it to us when we need it. Other than that, we're kind of cold patching the roads, we're going to try to concentrate on a lot of that this week, since the weather's supposed to be nice, if you get any calls, let us know, we'll patch them with the cold patch, obviously it's temporary, but, you know, we go out there as much as we can. And I would like to say, like in our service garage, we have been swapping out some of our lights in the garage, we changed a lot of it over to LED, we did it all in-house, we did purchase the lights, I'm saving the receipts, we're going to try and see if we can get reimbursed for some of that from a NOPEC grant, but we did it all in-house, it's a lot brighter in there, and obviously it'll save us some energy in the laundry. And that concludes my report.
Councilwoman Koski.
Do we use brine at all?
No, we just use the straight salt.
And then, I know you were looking at windows, did you end up?
Yeah, for the NOPEC grant, yes, we looked at windows for the service department, the fire department, we're going to look at a couple of Provo House, and possibly reimburse for some LED lights, too.
So, did you already have that grant, or...
No, actually, I believe it's on tonight's agenda for legislation, yeah, it's on tonight's agenda, and then we just kind of take it through the process, that's the first step.
But Joe, that's a three-year grant.
Three-year grant, yes, it's going to be like $50,000, $50, not $49,700, something like that, pretty much guaranteed, it's a reimbursement grant, so they'll reimburse us for everything we spent, about $50,000.
Councilman Jaworski.
Joe, it's been a while, but how much do we have left on our salt contract? How much more do we have to buy before that is fulfilled?
We, let's see, total, we're at like $2,100, we don't have it all delivered yet, we can order probably about another $600 or $700 to go, that'll put us at 110%. These one-inch, two-inch snows, we go through a lot of salt, and we're conserving it, you know, we're even on the mains, if you saw what our streets look like at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, you wouldn't believe it, we hardly throw anything, except on the hills and the curves, and then maybe during the week, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning, that's when we start trying to wet them down a little bit for rush hour, but, yeah, we've been conserving ever since we found out how difficult it is to, or actually not difficult, the timeframe it is to get the salt, they, yeah, they've been saying it, like I said, the contract says three to five days, they're about two weeks behind, we just call them every day.
So, then based on how this winter has progressed, assuming we still have, let's say, a month and a half, two months left of potential snowfall, will there be enough, is there enough room in our contract to ensure that we have enough salt?
I'm going to say at this point, yes, yes, and we'll conserve a little more if we have to, so we can make adjustments ourselves, but I would just say, next year, I'm expecting the prices to go way up, we're paying $26.77 a ton right now, next year I expect it to go up. Boy, you got it.
One last question, Joe, what's the policy for actually plowing the streets? I've seen several of the trucks come down a couple of streets where there was maybe an inch of snow near the curb, but there was, it was clean and dry the rest of the street, and they were just going right down with the blade and everything.
You know, sometimes it's a little aggressive on the mains, and actually, all the streets, if it's, if it's even like six, eight inches from the curb, we try to open up to catch basins the best we can for the water to drain, you'll see on some, some roads on the north end, we didn't plow to the curb on some of them, we actually turned into a sheet of ice, we actually took pictures of it, we had to, we hoped for the sun to melt some of it today, which it did, and then we ended up plowing it, but we're going to watch on the mains a little bit better, you know, but it's, they're trying to open up to catch basins for drainage. Granted, the water will filter through the snow, but just not as fast, and we had some freezing this weekend because of the thaw, and some of the snow, the water couldn't make it to the basins.
I guess my only concern is, if there's enough room and the catch basins are open, they're still plowing, again, from what I saw, it was about this much snow from the curb, and they had, they had the blades down, you know, with the way that our finances are, with the way that our capital improvement is, I hate to see these streets being torn up when there's no need to put a plow down.
We'll watch it, I'll, yeah, I'll talk to the guys about it, no problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the Service Director? Thank you, Mr. Dan Brozio. Building Commissioner Sack.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, I'd love to add my monthly report.
Any questions for the Council for the Building Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Sack. Recreation Director Stopp.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, just a couple of comments to my monthly report, we have some new classes coming to the Community Senior Center in March, we have a Family Fit, Family Strong class that's coming on Monday nights, it's basically a family bonding class, they'll be doing some exercise, nutrition, some goal setting, so it's going to be an interesting class, we have never offered this before, so it's something new, the whole class costs $10 for the six-week session that we're going to be offering, we also have a boot camp class that's coming in March, I don't have all the details specifically yet, that's going to be on Wednesday nights, and a personal trainer who lives in Wickliff works with Benner Highs, Iraq, and Fitness Club, Mike Hope is going to be bringing us that class, and then we also, we, Recreation Department and the Parks and Recreation Commission, I don't know if everyone is aware of this yet, but we are going to be hosting a Wickliff Christmas in July jog, it's going to be a 5K, one-mile fun run walk, centered down at the Community Senior Center, our target for benefits from this program is going to be the Wickliff Holiday Helping Hand Program, thus the Christmas in July theme, and we're going to be doing this on Saturday, July 28th, at an 8:30 start time, we're contracting with Greater Cleveland Cross Country, they're going to be providing the timing and some support for this race, Jim Corrigan and myself are kind of driving this bus, and we're looking forward to it, and seeing what's going to happen. And that's it.
Any questions or comments for the Recreation Director? Councilwoman Saloto.
I have one, just tell me the date again, July...
It's July 28th, it's a Saturday morning.
Great idea, wonderful idea.
Any other questions or comments for the Recreation Director? Mr. Stopp. I'll now open up the floor to audience participation, would anybody like to stand up, state your name and address, and let it talk to or address Wickliff City Council? Would anyone like to address Wickliff City Council? Mr. Murray.
Very quickly, Don Martin, 29105 Ridge Road in Wickliff, Ohio, very proud of that. Being tax season, I've been dealing with a lot of different issues, and I don't recall the reasoning why we went to RITA for tax services, I don't know whether we still have a tax department or not, I'm not sure, that's my problem, however, I do have to admit that having filed early my city income tax, it was a pleasure to do. The RITA has everything electronic, you don't have to do any paper thing, you have to sign on, get yourself an account with RITA, but then you go in there, password and ID, go in there, you fill out the form, they do all the calculations for you, so congratulations on that, I know it was previous council, so you guys don't take part in that part, but good job, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Anybody else I could address Wickliff City Council? Anybody else I could address Wickliff City Council? If not, our audience participation close. Committee reports. Councilman Jaworski.
Improvement Committee met on January 29th, present was myself, Council President Levon, council members Koski, Saloto, Boggo, Biondelo, Sackus, Mayor Barbish, also Engineer Farmica, Service Director Dambrosio, Assistant Service Director Strauss, Building Commissioner Sack, and Chief Powers. Meeting called the order at 7:05 p.m., and Engineer Farmica discussed the proposed Maple Street Waterline Project replacement, the current overall project cost is estimated to be at $799,000. Wickliff will partner with the Lake County Department of Utilities on this project, the project received a $249,000 OPWC grant, that, there's also an interest-free loan of $150,000 as well, the city's share is $380,022, the city's half of the OPWC grant is $118,620 plus the $150,000 interest-free loan, which means the initial local share for Wickliff would be $111,402, Lake County's share would end up being $418,978. Discussion on the project ensued, there were no objections, and the Maple Street Waterline Replacement Project was reported out of committee and recommended to the Finance Committee for budgetary consideration, meeting adjourned 7:14 p.m., respectfully submitted.
Councilwoman Saloto.
Okay, the Legislation and Welfare Committee met right after that committee, at 7:15 on January 29, for a couple of purposes, the number one purpose was a discussion of sewer at point-of-sale ordinances, and also Chapter 921 weed ordinances, present were the committee members Saloto, Sackus, Biondelo, and Koski, also present Boggo, Jaworski, Council President Levon, Mayor Barbish, City Council, I mean, City Engineer Mayor Farmica, also present, Law Director Zeeley, and Service Director Dambrosio, and I'm not sure, Tim, if you were there, I don't think you were there, I started to double-check myself, all right, anyway, so the first thing to discuss was Chapter 1303.70, a change of ownership was brought for discussion by Building Commissioner Ray Sack, the Building Commissioner asked for the following changes, number one, once a diat test is approved, it shall be valid for one year, currently it's six months, he also asked for the fee to increase from $300 to $200, it currently sits at $275, he also asked that it be permitted to hold one, we hold one and a half times the sewer repairs in Hestro, with work needs to be completed within 60 days, all tests to be brought within three feet from the edge of the city sidewalk, and the Law Director's going to speak at the next meeting a little bit more about adding diat test exceptions. We also talked about Chapter 921.05... Uh, we also talked about chapter 921.05, the weed notice changes. Um, building commissioner Sack brought that to the committee also. Uh, that consisted of residential cut, uh, changing the cost from 200 to 250, commercial cut from 400 to 450, and, uh, we were reminded that if a resident or business does not pay these fees, it goes to the county auditor for payment. Um, we also discussed briefly, Mayor Barbis brought up the topic of alcohol sales on city property, and law director Zeeley was to investigate the legal ramifications to the city if that should occur at our next meeting. The committee had no objections to the building commissioner's proposal, and recommended to the council that they authorize the law director to make this change, these changes. So I'd like to make a motion to the law director to modify these, these ordinances. That's chapter 1303.70 and chapter 921.05. Give me a second.
I second.
Moved by councilwoman Saloto and seconded by councilman Sackus to authorize the law director to modify chapters 921.05 and 1303.70. Discussion? Law director Zeeley.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Typically, we have these ordinances prepared right away from the next meeting. Uh, and as a matter of fact, most of them have been prepared at this point. It's really just modifying two chapters, 130370, chapter 92105. My concern is, uh, as the building commissioner and myself have looked more into a way to do legislation to hold the funds in escrow specifically on that, um, it's probably gonna add several new sections. It's not just modifying the one, but add, add additional sections to our current code. Therefore, it's gonna be a little bit more of a lengthy process preparing that legislation. That being said, it does affect part of 130370, so I want some direction from council on how to proceed. At our next council meeting, we can have legislation for all those other changes in 1303.7, meaning validity of the test for one year, the fee increase from $275 to $300, um, all diet tests being within three feet of the edge of the city sidewalk. Uh, we could have that legislation for our next meeting ready to go, but, uh, but understanding that it will probably need to be modified, once again, that section at a later point to include this escrowing of fees. So what I'm really looking for direction is whether you want me to have that legislation for next meeting with those other changes, and then present, uh, you know, at a subsequent council meeting, once we have the, uh, escrowing all prepared, or do we want to wait and do this all in one, one swoop?
So how long, how long do you think it will take to get the escrow, uh, just prepared? I mean...
You know, within, within the next month, I would say.
Okay.
Uh, I'm trying, I'm gonna try to get it done as quickly as possible, but like I said, this is, you know, as, as we're starting to investigate it, this isn't just a simple change to that section. Like I said, it's actually gonna probably, most likely, add several code sections that don't exist in our code outside of just that one. To make sure that we do this right, you know?
Right.
We wanna be able to, you know, regulate it pretty well. Now, like I said, it's not an issue to modify this section once again later. I'm just looking for some direction, if we wanna hold off until it's all ready to go, or do we wanna get those other pieces of legislation in effect, and then just modify, want to modify that yet? Escrow provisions are...
Go ahead, councilwoman Saloto.
Okay, so it seems to me that all of these different aspects of the, you know, all the different changes are fairly separate. I mean, they shouldn't be difficult to make interdependently of each other. So if we were to make some of these changes now, would it be that much of a difficulty then? I mean...
I think, I think most likely what would happen is just, we would be amending 1303.7 again, the escrow part, because that, because there's probably gonna be, have to be some language in that specific section regarding the escrowing. Where all those other things already are, the current legislation, we're just replacing 1303.7 with a new one, with those new additions to it. So if we wanna, if we wanna go forward with it, we'll probably have to amend it once again.
Okay, I don't have a problem with just waiting.
Yeah, does, any of you have any objections, just waiting and getting it passed once correctly?
I would say that's fine as well, because that's probably the most important part to it. You know, it's, that's what's holding up other transactions.
Right.
It's the escrow piece, so just do it at once.
No, we can, we can still pass the, the actual, but it's just, he's just letting us know that we can either, it's gonna be, might not be on next week's, next meeting's docket. It may be a month from now when he's, or, you know, first meeting in March or the second meeting in March or whatever, to get that out of there. That's all he's, that's all he wants to know.
But, I'm sorry, Mr. Council President, but if, if council wanted to proceed immediately on those other changes for our next council meeting, we can have legislation with those other changes. You know, if it was important to council to get the fee increase and, uh, you know, all those other things immediately.
I say we wait.
I say we wait.
Anybody else have an objection to waiting? Sandy, please call the roll on the motion on the floor.
Uh, Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
And, uh, one other note, the council, the weed change will be on for the next council meeting, because that is a separate ordinance, not affecting that, so that will be on for your next meeting, the, the residential cuts and the commercial cuts. Thank you, Mr. Slocum.
Uh, the finance committee met on February 5th at 7:00 PM to discuss the 2018 budget. Present, Biondelolo, Bogo, Kosky, Levon, Sackus, Saloto, excused, Jaworski. Also present, Barbis, Ice, Formica, DeBrosio, Strauss, Dole, Sack, Stopp, Powers. Mayor Barbis presented another draft of the 2018 budget with modifications he recommended. He reminded council that the revenue items were conservatively low and the expense items were conservatively high. His budget has a projected operating deficit of approximately $688,000. He said his departments will continue to look for grants wherever applicable. He recommends not replacing the open position in the service department caused by retirement. He said this could be reviewed in the third quarter of the year if the city is doing well financially. He also recommends not giving raises to all non-union employees in the city. The line of economic development was increased from $12,000 to $50,000 in anticipation of the city hiring an economic developer when the current economic developer's contract expired at the end of March. Council members asked questions to the directors for clarification on the amounts budgeted for specific line items. The council did not make any recommendations to modify any items at this time. Councilman Sackus asked if there was, had been any thought of approving some city hall administrators at part time. This is something we will look into at our next budget meeting. Councilman Levon notified everyone that he will schedule another budget meeting this week of February 19th, where council can recommend any adjustments. This item will remain in committee, meeting adjourned 8:44, respectfully submitted.
I'd like to call a committee of the hall meeting to discuss, I'm sorry, finance committee meeting on, at 7:10 on February 20th to discuss the 2018 pavement improvement, infrastructure projects and the 2018 budget. It's February 20th at 7:10 PM. Any commission reports?
Just got there, Jaworski.
There will be no planning commission meeting in March.
Any other commission reports?
I have a key Wickliffe Beautiful.
Councilwoman Saloto.
That's right. So, um, Keep Wickliffe Beautiful now has a PayPal account, which is very exciting, so that if we need to, if we'd like to order anything through the city, we now have PayPal available, and we're hoping to be able to provide some things with city logos, et cetera, on it, but you can also use it to make donations to the city if you should wish. Um, Keep Wickliffe Beautiful will be mailing a business newsletter out to over 200 Wickliffe businesses in March, so a copy will be given to each councilperson when it is published, and it will contain information about the Great American Cleanup, Business Bright Spot Award, Euclid Avenue Planter Program, and other news that pertinence to our business community. Uh, the Wickliffe Pride and Bloom Committee is a subcommittee of Keep Wickliffe Beautiful, met to decide on the flower selections for this year's plantings on Euclid Avenue. Keep Wickliffe Beautiful asked for donations from businesses to help offset the cost of these plants, and we're also looking into a Miracle Grow grant to help fund the project. And I can say, they're looking for some really robust plants that won't take a whole lot of upkeep, but will look great. Um, I suggested geraniums, but that's just a, add it. Um, so upcoming events, there is gonna be a rain barrel workshop, which is an interesting thing. It's March 12th at 6:30 PM. It's at the community senior center. Participants can build their own barrel to take home, so it's a $65 fee, it can be paid online using PayPal or by check with the registration form. Uh, it's presented by the Lake County Soil and Water Conservation District. And then we also have a freeway ramp cleanup at I-90 and Bishop Road and Euclid Avenue, April 21st. Keep Wickliffe Beautiful is coordinating the cleanups with Keep Euclid Beautiful, and it will start at 9:00 AM, free t-shirts to all volunteers.
Thank you, councilwoman. Any other commission?
April 21st. Keep Wickliffe Beautiful is coordinating the cleanups with Keep Euclid Beautiful, and it will start at 9:00 AM, free t-shirts to all volunteers.
And Mike Cassadante to the charter review commission with a term to expire 12/31/2018.
Yes, and these were two folks, two of the four replacements that were approved prior, just after the first meeting. One gentleman wasn't able to make it due to work schedules, and there was another conflict with the other person, so we're just replacing those, those two people to have nine.
Councilwoman Kosky.
I'll make a motion to affirm the mayor's appointment of Cameron Mays and Mike Cassadante to the charter review commission.
I'll say it.
Moved by councilwoman, Kosky, seconded by councilwoman Saloto, to affirm the mayor's appointment of Cameron Mays and Mike Cassadante to the charter review commission with a term to expire December 35th, 1st, 2018. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Referendum zoning, mayor.
Correct, yeah, that's the, the whole points, three issues I wanted to add into committee. So referendum zoning is, and that could be brought up by the charter review commission, but being is that they have until next year. I want to get that worked on this year. So essentially, talk about the Mosley. Mosley was zoned for a hotel, needed to be changed institutional. People, including myself, were running around like maniacs trying to get signatures done so we can get on the ballot. So it just, it prevents business from moving forward. It takes forever to get something like that done, and, you know, they could have said, "Well, forget that, I'll have time and went somewhere else." Thank, thank goodness they stayed, a $40 million investment. So changing it, from going to the voters, it just goes to, if something needs to be rezoned and someone requests that, council has to vote to approve it, but it's a quicker process. If it's something we approve, it's done in a month, not, you know, if someone comes to you in January and say, "Oh, I gotta wait until November," so I wanna get that into a committee to discuss that, hopefully get that on the ballot this year, and then rules for regard...
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. So, uh, any other questions or discussions on that? Yeah, we'll put that in the committee of the hall, referendum zoning in the committee of the hall. New business, embassy, garbage collection, mayor.
Correct, yeah, I've got a couple complaints from people taking garbage out too early, leaving the cans out too long, and at first, I almost brushed it off, but then I started noticing it more around the city and talked to more friends about it, and they say, "Yeah, some guy on my street left it out for three or four days." So, and, yeah, I talked about it during the campaign race and the bar a little bit, so I think we need to, in the hands of, look at the rules for the garbage collection, if there should be any fines with that, or we're certain if there's repeat offenders. Same with the property maintenance codes, sort of along the same line, just review them. Do we need to update anything? I think we're trying to raise the bar a little bit, we got a lot of, you know, dilapidated buildings around, and I think we should review the property maintenance codes and step it up a little bit.
Okay, councilman Jaworski.
On the issue of garbage collection, I frankly would ask that we look into what it would take for the city to break the current contract with Kimball Recycling, if that's something that we can do. If so, what would be the ramification, just to give this council, um, just an idea of if it's doable or if it's not? And...
I'd agree with that. Well...
They were, the point of what I was bringing up.
No, but I, I think it's along the same way.
Yeah.
I think there's an issue with Kimball.
Yeah. Councilwoman Kosky.
Go ahead, keep...
Councilwoman Saloto.
Sorry. I was wondering if you could share what the concerns are, I mean, I, I have a problem.
They made a terrible contract, the city's getting ripped off.
Okay.
We're locking the price increases, other costs that probably shouldn't be there.
So you wanna put another item in there as well?
Yeah.
So, okay, we'll put garbage collection rules in the legislation of welfare. We'll put Kimball contract in the committee of the hall. Move the new business deed, property maintenance codes?
Yeah, along the same lines, yeah, I talked about raising the bar on our property maintenance codes, just I think we should reevaluate all of those. We could get some feedback from, you know, people that have a new corridor committee, but, you know, you see, as I've been talking to business owners, I mean, the ones that have called me back so far, maybe four or five, are the ones that keep up on the properties, and you've got someone next door that, that doesn't. It's not fair to the community, it's not fair to the folks that put money into the community. Again, we just need to raise the bar a little bit. Not sure exactly what that means, but get in the commission and have conversations and, and see where we go from there.
We'll move the property maintenance codes into the legislation of welfare committee. Okay, item E, Lake County Permissive Tax. I had a conversation with a Lake County engineer, uh, and they are putting a $5 tax under our license plates, uh, the, every year annually, and he wants to discuss that with council, uh, so we're aware in case any of our residents talk to us about it. So Lake County Permissive Tax, we're gonna have a meeting, and the, put that in the committee of the hall, and we're gonna have a meeting on that at 7:00 PM on February 20th. Five-minute presentation on explanation of what's going on with that tax.
You said February 20th?
February 20th at 7:00 PM. Okay. Item F, Tobacco 21. Uh, Lake County General Health District is trying to push, uh, raising the age of purchasing tobacco to the age of 21. Put this into a committee, I'd like to put it in the legislative welfare committee. Chairman of that committee, please. And item G, charging for pavilion rentals, councilman Sackus.
Yes, I would like to recommend if we could put into the parks and properties committee for charging $25 for pavilion rental at our parks.
Uh, councilwoman Kosky.
We spoke about that briefly at the last...
Right, so...
...meeting. Tim, did you have, uh, an estimate of how, about how many rentals we have in the summer?
I think it would result in a couple thousand dollars in fees.
Okay, we'll put that in the parks and properties committee. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances. Ordinance number 2018-03, an ordinance amending chapter 171-07, hospitalization of the codifying ordinances of the city of Wickliffe, Ohio. First reading. Ordinance number 2018-04, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wickliffe, Ohio to enter into an amended contract with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1536 AFL-CIO, declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by councilwoman Kosky, seconded by councilman Jaworski, that the rules of Wickliffe City Council be suspended, and ordinance number 2018-04 be placed on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by councilman Sackus, seconded by councilwoman Kosky, that the rules of Wickliffe City Council be suspended, and ordinance number 2018-05 be placed on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption. Second.
Moved by councilman Sackus, seconded by councilwoman Kosky, that the rules of Wickliffe City Council be suspended, and ordinance number 2018-05 be placed on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
be adopted as presented. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-06, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wickliff, Ohio to enter into an amended contract with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 116, patrolmen declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilwoman Kosky, that rules of Wickliff City Council be suspended and Ordinance number 2018-06 be placed on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kosky, seconded by Councilman Biondelolo, that Ordinance 2018-06 be adopted as presented. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-07, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wickliff, Ohio to enter into an amended agreement with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association Dispatchers, declaring an emergency.
Suspension. Second.
Moved by Councilman Sakis, seconded by Councilman Bogo, that the rules of Wickliff City Council be suspended and Ordinance number 2018-07 be placed on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kosky, seconded by Councilman Biondelolo, that Ordinance 2018-07 be adopted as presented. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-08, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Wickliff, Ohio to enter into a contract with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association, clerical and declaring an emergency.
Suspension. Second.
Moved by Councilman Sakis, seconded by Councilman Biondelolo, that the rules of Wickliff City Council be suspended and Ordinance number 2018-08 be placed on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sakis, seconded by Councilwoman Kosky, that Ordinance number 2018-08 be adopted as presented. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018-02, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Wickliff, Ohio to enter into a grant agreement with Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council to accept NOPEC energized community grants and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kosky, seconded by Councilman Biondelolo, that the rules of Wickliff City Council be suspended and Resolution number 2018-02 be placed on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption. Second.
Moved by Councilman Sakis, seconded by Councilman Bogo, that the rules of Wickliff City Council be suspended, oh, sorry, moved by, that Resolution 2018-02 be adopted as presented. Discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Other legislation? miscellaneous? Understood motion for adjournment? Moved by Councilwoman Kosky, seconded by Councilman Biondelolo, motion for adjournment? Discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Biondelolo?
Yes.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.